We come bless you in your name, because your name is worthy to be blessed. We come asking right now, Father, you forgive us for our sins, as we forgive those who trust us against us, and we thank you. Father, we come praying for this city, counties, and this country. Father, we pray for this whole wide world of unrest. We thank you right now, Father, you knew all about it before the beginning of the earth. We thank you and we bless you. And, Father, we ask you to convene and do, make things right where they're wrong. Please, Lord, help us. We come thanking you for our county. Father, you know what our shape, our county is in, we asking you right now to bring it back to a level that we can all sustain ourselves and be productive citizens. We thank you now. Then help us as only you can do and you will do, and we thank you for what you're going to do in advance. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. St. Louis, United States of America, and to your republic, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting this Tuesday, January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, six p.m. We have a conference line set up, number is one nine one seven nine zero zero one zero two two, access code three two three four seven pound. This is not a toll-free number, and you may be subject to long-distance charges according to your long-distance plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting for public comments, please follow the below structures. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your line when it's your turn to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you'll be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each agenda item. With that said, we will, this is a workshop, so there won't be any voting, just all discussion here. So with that said, we will move to item number three. Representative from Swan River Water Management District to present modeling report. I know there's others in the room that may want to speak, so we will let Swan River Water run through the report, and then if there's any questions, if there's any questions, we can press that.
So, Mr. Chairperson, if you recall, after the closure of the mill, there were some concerns from staff and, of course, citizens, that once the pumps shut down, that there may be a residual effect from no withdrawal of that amount of water from the ground. So, we reached out to Swan River Water Management, they have conducting some modeling efforts for us, and Amy Brown, who is the Deputy Executive Director of Water Resources, is going to present those results to us.
Thank you, thank you for inviting me here to talk through this. I'm going to step through the information on these slides. We tried to pull as much data as we could, put it together in a way that kind of helps paint the picture of what the situation is right now, so please don't hesitate to speak up if I need to clarify what's on these. Some of these are better formatted to look at in front of me than on a screen, so if I need to clarify what's on the axes or anything like that on some of the graphs, please just speak up as I go through these. So, first of all, I started, this is just a summary of how much rainfall Taylor County has gotten. This is starting on September first of twenty-twenty-three, and just one of the points to make here is that y'all have had a lot of water in this last little bit since the storm. I was actually looking, though, I should have actually gone back to June of twenty-three, because that's when some of your recent high water has kind of kicked in. You had almost six inches of rain across Taylor County, starting back in June, even before the hurricane came through. So, there was a lot of water on the ground, even going back to September twenty-three. And then if you take one step up, so rainfall in the last ninety days, and this is as of the end of January, you can see that there's a good swath of Taylor County that has had almost twenty or above twenty inches of rainfall in the last ninety days. And then if you move forward one more step, and you look at the rainfall in the last thirty-eight, and again, this is three p.m. of January, and you can see that although less than has been recently, it's still been a relatively wet wintertime for this area. So, if we move to the next slide, the consequences of that, what you're looking at here, these are levels in the Florida aquifer, and so you can see that there's a vast swath of Taylor County, but also portions of Lafayette and Madison County, where you're seeing groundwater levels in a very dark blue. That means it's above the ninetieth percentile, which just means that, for the record, as long as we've been looking at water levels, it's really up at the high end of what is normal for this area, and it's a broad swath of areas just at that high end. Now, some of that is rainfall. Since twenty-eighteen, this area has been getting a lot of rain. If you remember back to twenty-eighteen, that was about seventy-four inches of rain that you guys got in two thousand eighteen, and it's kind of persisted since then to be either at or above average every single year since twenty-eighteen. So, as of twenty-twenty-three, you had about sixty-four inches of rainfall. In twenty-twenty-three as a whole, that's about a hundred twenty percent of what's average or typical for this area. So, there has been a persistent issue with just, we've had a lot of rain for this area, and the aquifer right now is very poor. But, again, there's, we're trying to tease apart what other causes might be driving some of this high water, and there are some other things that make it especially problematic when you get this much rain in the wintertime. So, one of them is the fact that in the wintertime, when things kind of go dormant, there's less plant life to take up the rain that hits the land surface. So, you actually do find that water does persist more when you get the wintertime rains, because there's less plant activity to take that water up. Also, because of Adelia and the storm damage that came through, some of the trees sustained damage that similarly impacts the ability of those trees to take up water that would typically happen. So, the tree damage is also a potential influencing factor on where you're seeing the water levels right now in this area. Also, with Adelia, because of the storm damage, you had potentially some obstructions of the drainage areas. So, the, you know, the ability of the water to drain off the land surface because of the storm debris that is in some of those drainage areas, even just the little crevices drains, that potentially has impacted the ability of the system to drain. But then we also know that there's the changes in pumping that have happened recently at the mill. So, I'll just talk you through the data that we have right now in terms of what we're seeing. All right, so, some of this is just some general information to get us oriented. This is just showing land surface elevation. There is a fair amount of relief in the land surface that drains towards the coast. And so, you've got the high areas off to the, off to the northeast. You've got the topographic high areas there, and then you've got the water that then drains towards the coastline. So, that's just going to be the natural drainage of the land surface, and then paired with that, if you go to the next slide, this is just showing what the normal levels of the Florida aquifer are underneath the land surface. So, that's the main aquifer system that's sitting underneath the land surface. And that's just to kind of get us oriented. You have a gradient with water under the land surface being higher towards the northeast, and then dropping off, your drain is towards the Gulf, so the water is all draining out towards the Gulf. So, now, just to orient you here, I've got two, those are river gauges. I have two river gauges circled on this map. One is upgrading of the mill, which is indicated by a star, and then there's another one circled that's downgrading of the mill that's circled by a star. And I'll show some data from that flow record a little later on. At the star there, that is the GP Foley Cellulose Mill, the permitted amount that they were allowed to pull out of the ground, it's about forty million gallons per day at this point. Up until about September of twenty-twenty-three, they were using about thirty-six million gallons per day. In September, based on the records that were shared with us, first, they stepped down the pumping to about twenty-one million gallons per day, so about, I can't do that back in my head, but from thirty-six to twenty-one million gallons per day. And then, there was a second step down, they're now using about just over ten million gallons per day. That was in October. And so, there is still some level of pumping there, but substantially less than there was in September. So, we have that change in pumping that occurred. Go on to the next, now, this is where some of the figures might be a little bit hard to see. So, these are those two river gauges that I've circled. The one in red at the top is upstream of the mill and where the withdrawal is happening from the ground. The second one is downstream of that, there are the two circled ones on the prior page. And this is a record that starts in twenty-eighteen, which is shown on the Y-axis is how much flow is coming out of those rivers. The spikes that you see would be driven by rainfall. So, you know, you have a pretty flat river system here where the rain hits the land surface and it drains out. But then, kind of the baseline or the bottom parts of that graph, those are going to be more driven by the groundwater and changes in groundwater pumping, because that's the contribution that happens. So, the difference between the red line and the blue line is water that's draining into the river system as it goes towards the Gulf from this area. So, when we're looking at this, if you look at the early part of the record, remember, twenty-eighteen was one of those times where there was a substantial amount of rainfall. That was that real heavy rainfall year at the beginning of the record that I was talking about. If you look at the change in flow, not so much at the spiky times, but when it's more towards lower level, you can see that there was about a hundred cubic feet per second, so it's about a hundred cubic feet per second of difference between the red line and the blue line. So, there's water being picked up between the upstream of the mill and downstream. Now, some of that was the discharge from the mill itself. So, if you move forward, the Foley Cellulose Mill constructed a pipeline to move that effluent out to the Gulf. So, that project completed in, at the end of twenty-twenty, and I've got an arrow showing where that occurred. So, as you move forward from that line, then you start to see the line, instead of being around a hundred, when it gets to its lowest point, it's maybe closer to fifty. That change, that drop-off that you see there, is because that flow that was coming from the mill has now been displaced out to the Gulf. So, you're seeing that that water is no longer present in the river system. But now, if you step forward to twenty-twenty-three, and you're looking at the end of that graphic, more like where the arrow is for the change in pumping, September to October, that's where you see, again, once that line kind of drops down, the lowest that line now is getting is now back close to a hundred. And what that is, is now, they're no longer pulling the water out. That water is naturally maybe getting back into the river, kind of like the amount of flow that was getting there when the discharge was right there at the mill prior to the change in that location. So, you are seeing more water getting back into the Fenn Holloway upstream where it had been happening with the pipeline. And if you use one slide forward, this is just zooming in on that last, so you can see a little bit more clearly. This is just the last twelve months, looking at the flow, and it's the same information. It's the river gauges that's upstream and then downstream of the Foley mill and the pumping. And you can then see, you know, September, October, you can see that the flows then, that those look like in November, where, you know, there were no spikes coming from rainfall events, but that flow was up higher than it was back in January, when the pipeline would have been active. So, you are seeing more water present that's coming into the river, and it's up closer to town. It's not, it's not down by the coast like it was with the pipeline. So, this is just zooming in on where the wells themselves are, so the permitted Foley wells are being shown with the orange dots that are here in Taylor County. The facility itself is marked with a star. When we look at the potential change in pumping from those wells, just using our modeling that we do when we're looking at water use, consumptive use considerations, if you turned the wells completely off at Foley, and you're looking at what the potential influence of that would be in terms of changes in flow to the Fenn Holloway River, again, the same river gauges, the two circled ones would be the first one that's shown on that graphic, which is Fenn Holloway River near Foley. And even upgrading, we would think that maybe about one cubic feet per second of increased flow you might see in the river, based on the fact that the pumps are no longer pulling water out. As you work your way down to the Fenn Holloway River near Perry, which is the one we were talking about before, that second black circle, about twenty-seven cubic feet per second of flow that we would expect to see there, that would have been there with the pumps pulling the water out and the pipe moving that water to the Gulf. So, that's the magnitude of the change. That volume of water would be noticeable when it's drier times. You would see water in the river there, where there might not be rivers, might not be water in the river with the pumps during drier times. There might be times when there'd be less water in the river, noticeably less water in the river with the pumps on than off. But, as the flows come up in that river, you wouldn't detect the difference during higher flow times, like after rainfall events. So, we were trying to understand what the potential influence might be, or where you might expect to see changes to the superficial aquifer or aquifer water near the land surface based on the changes in pumping. And there had been a planning level analysis done for this whole western part of the district. And what we're seeing is that within that circled area where you're seeing those green squares, those are areas where you might expect there to be more water near the land surface with the pumps turned off than with the pumps turned on. So, that would be an area where you might see that. But, again, you wouldn't be expecting to see a substantial amount higher water, maybe more like persistent water, and more likely to hold water near the land surface, based on the changes in pumping that are occurring. And we provided that shapefile outline and shared that with the county. So, then, before we move on to that next slide, if I can go back one. So, just what I'll be talking about on the next slide is the giant yellow dot that's kind of in the center. That's one of the upper Florida aquifer wells. But also, just for information, we have well data, all of the pink dots, all the purple dots that you see on that map represent places where we have water level data that we can look at and we can use to kind of truth up what we're seeing in terms of whether water levels are the same as, higher or lower than they have been in the recent past or in more distant past years. So, if we step up one, we're going to be looking at where that yellow dot is on the next map, on the next slide. So, here, what we're looking at, the top graphic is just showing rainfall events and how much rain was occurring in inches, and it's, again, running from twenty-eighteen forward into the end of December of twenty-three. So, you're seeing pretty steady, you've got some very high rain events that have happened through that last time period. You see the density of rainfall events that came in kind of the middle and later of twenty-twenty-three with all the rain that has been happening in this area. What we see on the bottom is what the well levels look like at that, there's a Foley well, called the Foley Tower Upper Florida Aquifer Well, so that's the one that's right, was right in the center of that green. And what you're seeing there, when you look at that record, that's the level of the well itself. The land surface elevation in that area, just for reference, is about seventy-nine to eighty feet. So, you're below the land surface when you're looking at these levels. But we do see that more recently, towards the end of twenty-twenty-three, that level is as high as it has been in the last five years, so maybe even higher than it, it is higher than it has been in the last five. So, even during the times where you're getting those heavy rainfalls earlier on, before twenty-eighteen and nineteen, you didn't see levels to the same level as it was towards the end of this year. So, that is where you're potentially seeing the influence of the change in pumping way on top of all the rainfall you've gotten to produce a high level. These are just some of the areas that we went to look at today with Taylor County today. Some of those overlap with the area where you're seeing that potential influence of the change in pumping, but then some of the areas of concern are outside of where we would expect there to be an influence due to the change in pumping. But that doesn't change the fact that we also have the other stress factors that we talked about earlier, including the storm damage, the damage to the trees themselves, and the changes in water uptake that happens with that type of storm damage. So, in terms of next steps, we have drafted up what's called a task work assignment for us to try and perform a more detailed analysis of flows and movements to fold that into the scheme of flood modeling that's occurring during this time in this area. And we're going to try to use the groundwater model and the changes in the groundwater model, the changes in groundwater pumping, to inform the flood mapping and see if we need to refine or mitigate extra areas based on those changes. We'll be continuing to coordinate with the county and trying to identify areas to assist and how we can develop solutions. We'll probably give some mitigation that we'll need to think about for some areas, based on what's going on. I do want to add, since I gave this presentation, I gave this presentation also to our governing board in January. Between that presentation and now, I also had the opportunity to see a presentation by the North West Florida Water Management District, and I will tell you that they saw similar persistent high levels of flooding after Hurricane Michael hit that part of Florida as well. They did do a detailed study there, and they did find that, again, some of the things that I mentioned, the blockage of some of the drainage, the tributaries and things like that, based on storm damage, also the loss of the ability of the trees to pull up water, both of those had enough of an effect that they saw persistent flooding in that area. They were also seeing the same above-average rainfall that we've been seeing for the last, since twenty-eighteen. And then, the next slide is just a more detailed look at where the drawdown in pumping was occurring associated with the Foley mill. And, again, this is based on a model that was used to evaluate where the influence would be. So, you do see there are areas where there is substantial drawdown, but most of those would be on the property itself, not necessarily in the surrounding area. But you do see, again, it's about that half-foot line where we would anticipate, you would potentially see a change in how the superficial is performing, based on turning off those pumps. I hope this information is helpful. I'm happy to attempt to take any questions, or we have folks that can clarify if I said anything.
No, we appreciate you putting the time and the effort into it. I know there's a lot of questions throughout the community, in different areas in the community, of what, you know, what the future looks like based on, you know, Hurricane mill closure, all the things that you mentioned here. So, you know, what kind of timeframe do you guys, you guys continue to analyze the situation? What kind of timeframe do you have, you know, to have more information on what, long-term, what we may look like?
My understanding that TWA that we're talking about, the hope was to get it executed.
Within three months, the study to be within eight.
Within this calendar year, to have more information on that. I think it was October.
I'm not sure exactly the date, but.
It'll depend, I, we're trying to push it into X two D, we're working with the state visiting the office to try and get that moved forward.
Can I follow up on that? So, in October, you expect to have the modeled results of the current situation's influence or possible solutions to alleviate the inundation of runoff in the areas? So, you're just going to be able to identify and quantify what's, how bad it is and where it is, but not address a possible remediation or solution to address it?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Roy, you're here. With the information that has been collected all this time, has the commissioners here, the county, has any idea, how can you guys assist the community to mitigate a little bit of this problem we have seen for the last three years? Because this just didn't happen during the last hurricane. And people here can tell you, you know, since twenty-eighteen, the water levels have grown up. That's when the Fenn Holloway River project ended. That was the end of it. The bay is closed. We know the water accumulating, the bay has a lot to do with the water under the ground. So, is there anything that the county has in between, assistance that you guys can provide? Because it's three years and we have not reached out.
Do you want to speak to the efforts with the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yeah, we've been working with the, if you can go back to your areas that we provided you on the map, that one. Those are ten different areas, actually, there's twelve on that one, that we identified with the Army Corps of Engineers of specific areas throughout the county that we have seen repetitive, excessive levels of storm water. They have actually gone to the extent of, they finished it down in Steen Hatchie, where they've actually done a three-dimensional modeling result of, this is what happens when we put this recurrent interval rainfall on this area, and how that water accumulates. And then, actually, they go one step further, which is why I asked you the question, is they suggest possible mitigation measures. Right now, everything north of Steen Hatchie, they're currently, they've done an existing conditions model, so they're calibrating it to make it be, to be sure that the results that they get out of it are reflective of what's actually been happening historically. Once they have that one finished, which they are very close to being done, is they will then start looking at mitigation measures to, such as you, you know, in that area, is there a way for us to be able to experience a fifty-year recurrence interval and still make sure that our roadways are staying high water? So, that's the effort that's been going on. Funding and availability of staff has made it difficult through the Army Corps. They have been very diligent. They went back to the table to get additional funding. So, right now, they're holding the course, and we hope this year that we will have at least that end result. We can bring that back to the board with, we have four million dollars that are earmarked for ARPA funds that we are going to commit to that project. The board will prioritize those ten and then say, we want the best bang for our buck, and we're going to do, start at the worst first and then move down till we run out of money.
One question here also is, GP, who owns the land on the bay, controls the water. Is there any way we can put all gates or talk to them to give a little bit of relief until this gets implemented? I mean, the project was a success, right? The environmental impact that we had forty years ago, when the mill actually dried the bay to plant trees, to plant trees has reversed. The mill is not there anymore. What's the point? Could we talk to GP or for where the owner of the land is now and allow to put some floodgates or to, to eliminate the flooding that is occurring right there? Because definitely, you know, that is a major impact to the park community. This is December.
I, I'm not the GP by any means, but one thing that we do know is that has been established as a wetland mitigation area. So there is a certain requirement and obligation for them to sustain it as, in the hydrology that's conducive to those wetlands. So drying it up or releasing gates is probably not completely feasible. I don't know if they can lower the level and that help reduce a potential head, but you know, that would be a question for them to answer.
When the, when the bay was empty 40 years ago, the population of these county was nowhere yesterday. The infrastructure that you have, the roads and all that was not here. The population was much smaller. So why not approach them and allow them, they were successful in their, in the project. Why not allow them to allow us to have a little bit of relief and see if that would help us long-term? Because this is not going to go away. I mean, this was December, you see the amount of rain that we had. The ground level, surface level water was high, higher than it has been in the history of this town.
I can't speak to the mitigation effort itself, but if we can go back to the Florida aquifer levels map, which way at the beginning was that one with all the blue?
DeP, does DEP issue the permit?
Yeah. Yeah, so is it a DEP permitting facility? I mean, mercifully, some of the Florida aquifer levels are dropping in Taylor County as of the end of January, but the whole area here is above 75 percentile. So one of the challenges is there's not a lot of places for water to go right now. Really, we were talking about, I mean, ideally we want to see it getting to the Fen Hallway River or these other granages and getting it out to the Gulf. Because right now there's really nowhere to put more water. And if you release it from one area, if, if everything's above the 95 percentile, that's when you really need to get it to get to the Gulf at this point, because we don't have space to put it somewhere else nearby. So, I mean, that's kind of the, the big picture challenge we have right now is that the aquifer here is very, very poor right now.
It's not going to get any better, you know? By June, July, the mill was shut down completely. The last well that's running right now will no longer be there. There will be more water.
But I think the environmental conditions will be different by June or July with the heat and, well, not necessarily, but I think, I mean, I mean, and I'm just speculating, you know, we'll have the heat that will help with evaporate some of the water. And also the trees will be more active. So when the trees, you know, wake up, as we say, that will help draw some of the water out of the ground, if I'm not mistaken.
In 2021, we had the same issue. The flood was there, it was through the, through the summer, spring, summer. So this is not going to get any better with the amount of rain that we have in December. The waters have stayed for nine weeks in public water, like I explained to you guys last night, nine weeks daily, you know, just to eliminate the waters in the pond. So it's a concern, not just for me, but there are those citizens here that, residents of this town that are dealing with the same situation. So unless there's a, you know, immediate relief for these, we will experience this again in the summer, in the spring, summer. So that's, that's my concern. I'm not speaking for myself, I'm sure there are many people here that would like to be in front of you guys and express the same thought that they have.
Let me say this. I've been around a long time and I've seen both across 221 and Dog's Market. I've seen that years ago. Now it's not there anymore. It's down in, it's down in the valleys now. Something happened and something was done in order to get that water off of 221 and out of that bay so they can plant trees. Most time, that's just simple form of divert water to a different area and helping out. And the Corps of Engineers, Army Engineers, I thought we had a study going on and if they come back with a study and it's positive, I think it's be, for whom the board to do what they can, try to do, help, you know, alleviate the problem that our citizens have.
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir. That is what I was referring to earlier, that they're, they are in the last stages of the second phase.
Yes. Well, do we know one of the changes of the aquifer that they really contributes to our normal level? Do we know what, at what level the bay could be sustained and, and maybe keep our aquifer down even if we were to have some four inches of rain? I mean, at what level could it be attained?
I think that the challenge certainly we have at this point is that the rainfall across not just Taylor County, but Madison Le Fay, it's all above average or a sustained amount of time. And so with average rainfall, you would have that capacity to, to hold that water. But when you've been above average plus the storm damage, plus potentially some drainage getting blocked, that's where I think the challenge is that, that the water levels have been at a sustained high level for a long time in this area and the capacity of the aquifer to store that extra water is, is diminished at this point in time.
If I can just expound on what you started, because, I mean, that's a very good point. And what I was, what I was thinking is carrying it one step further and saying, is there, because when we get into talking about mitigation measures, is there a level at which we could manage our stormwater runoff such that you guys determine it's not a detriment to our water source so that we could kind of have an idea, yes, you can address the overflow in this pond, but you can't take the pond down below this? So that we kind of have an idea of all these congested ditches that you're making reference to with full of vegetation, that there is some means to clean these out and restore them back to their kind of original configuration so that it's not necessarily our ambition to drain everything, but it is our ambition to handle the flood stage of.
That sounds great. That's a, that's a good plan. Clean out the water that we have now.
Well, and the tough part of it is, you know, I, I was ecstatic when you said this has been happening, or recognize it's been happening since 2018. I would hope that that type of information would be supportive of not as stringent of oversight on our cleaning out activities to make it an easier process to clean these ditches and restore these drainage paths to what they were before versus, as you guys well know, and Ken's probably pringing, this is a very difficult task to get that piece of equipment or to clean those environmentally sensitive areas.
Maybe the business and community services.
First, I, I just, again, thank y'all for letting us be here. You know, what, what we came here tonight was based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting I came to. Asking, look, if, if they reduce the pumping that's going on at the mill, what would that look like and what would that influence? We're, we're here tonight by no means to have a solution to the flood problem or the, the issues you had going on for three or four years. But, but we are hearing what you're saying and I understand where you're getting at. Look, if we spend the time and the effort and the money to get the data of where the impacts are, we need to also circle it with a plan on how we can fix it. So, you know, we'll reach out, we reach out to the Office of Resiliency already to fund this next TWA that we've got to get this, this study going. So we're, we're here with what you've got to say. I wish I had better answers for you.
We have the information to convey that, that we're going to be being completely prepared.
Yeah, like I mentioned in the, the last meeting that we did have together, is, you know, the last thing we want to do is see you guys do this fantastic work product that we don't have the legal means to implement. You know, I have a set of old plans from 20-plus years ago that have, you know, go from this point to this point, this size ditch and this deepness wide, okay, across a lot of private land that you can't get permission to go on. So here are these bottlenecks that make it extremely difficult to achieve the solution that is going to work. We don't want to get in that same position. So I guess to the extent that we can use some natural drains pass and have some sovereignty on accessibility for maintenance, that would be probably easier for us to implement and just in thinking about that when you get to that point.
So in the best case scenario, it was the last part of this year for that information to be.
For the, for the information, I, I'm not familiar with the, the work that the Corps has given in terms of timing to that, but this information we presented this year.
We have some questions before they go?
Oh, I got one right here. Can you go back to that slide that shows the area of concern that y'all are looking at now and identify? I've had more than three years of mine asked. What are these areas you're looking at? How, I can tell where they are by just reading the dogs.
I'll read them off too, if you'd like. So the first two at the bottom is around First Avenue South and 13th Street. That's down in Steen Hatchie. As we move back up, the three that are on the left, the first one is, the lowest one is Strickland Lanning subdivision area. Next one up from that is Spring Warrior, which is right there where Pocket Road kind of makes its intersection. And then the next one up from that is Courtney Grade, which is a lot of those steeper super areas as you get down towards the Hampton Springs. If we look now, going to the top down on the top right, the first one is the Pole Hill and Fortner subdivision area. The next one down is the East Ellison Road area. The next one down is the Wilder Creek area. The next one down is the Henry Gibson Lipscomb Circle, or excuse me, Lipscomb and Bubba Hanan Circle area. The next one down is the Foley Cut Off Road near Mixon Road and Yousis Gunner. And then the next one down is the Turner Road area. The next one down is the Dewey McGuire and Doolin Lane area. That was 12 of them.
Jamie, one thing, this flooding issue is not due to our area, Dixie County. About a year before, we had flooding really bad here. They had a terrible summer one year. I mean, it seemed like the storm just parked there and I was on, I was still on the board at that time. And, and they, they secured funding to do studies and they actually said that the one study on the south end of the county needed to be flipped up and go to the north end and they did all kinds of hydrology studies and they secured money to do ditch cleanouts like what Mr. Dudley's talking about. I think that y'all have some counterparts on other boards and other, other county managers that you might be able to link to. I know a guy that serves on the Water Management District staff that used to have a job in that area that actually is sitting in this room, he's got a white beard. They know how to get things done down there because this isn't new territory to get things done, okay? So I would highly encourage our board in Taylor County to take initiative and, and find ways to get things done that can be done. And I know that the study in the next eight months is going to help out a lot. I know that Mr. Dudley has some concerns, he's got issues going across private property and all this other. The blueprint's already been done. They, they got the canals cleaned out, the ditches cleaned out, and it's alleviated a lot of the problem even with the aquifers high as it is down there right now. We're not, and the reason why I could tell you that they got it fixed is because they're not complaining to us, okay? I'm, I've got a, I've got a guy that comes to the Water Meeting every once in a while and he's not complaining, but the squeaky wheel gets to grease. You know what I'm talking about? So I would, I would encourage you guys that there's, there is ways to get things done. We're still underneath, if I'm not mistaken, emergency management with hurricanes, is that right?
I think that there's still a, a state.
State of emergency.
But now, if I could ask a question.
Hold on. The good news is, is there's ways with under state of emergency to get things done and there's funding there. So that's something that we need to look at. But go ahead to your question.
I don't believe we have a canal system in Taylor County similar to Dixie County, do we?
I'm not really familiar with your system. I mean, we did, we had a OWPA canal that was done that we had.
Which we don't have here, right? That's the, that's the difference that I understand.
And then we, we actually at that time spent a little over, probably about 14, 16 months going with landowners individually and getting rid of entries to do the canal work that we were able to do. But, you know, they, they weren't permanent maintenance easements, they were just temporary easements.
But back to Mr. Dempsey's point, when I was a little boy, I remember the flooding. And I remember when the dredge in Pimple Creek out and they stopped that flooding. We didn't have that problem afterwards. There's, I'm just telling you, there's ways to maintain the tributaries that we have. And it may not be canals, but it's, but there's, if you go up the creeks today with all the debris that's in them, but also the, the 40 and 50 years of people saying, hey, I want a little bit of the land bridge right here. I'd like to stop up a little bit of water because I, I might want a pond during drought time. There's, there's example after example after example of that kind of stuff in natural drainage areas that not just one or two affect you, but when you have on and on and on and 40 and 50 years of this going on, it affects the drainage and the hydrology of the land. And it needs to be looked at and addressed. And that's, I think that's the reason why some of the problems that we have, and, and Dudley, you've done a great job, I mean, pinpointing every area right there. But we just, there's ways to get things done and, and there's going to be help, but there's also, the blueprint's already been, been followed one time. I just would encourage you guys to go out there and look at that.
You, you saying there's a possibility we could clean out the four creeks that comes out of the bay from the head of them on down to the, what you say?
I've seen projects come through where they, they worked in, in the city of Stark, all kinds of, the Alligator Creek projects, there's projects all over our district that folks have been done. And what we got to do is get out and look around and there's people here to help you to get that stuff done.
I believe that would be a good start.
There's Woods Creek, Pimple Creek, Spring Creek, you know, Bobber Creek, all those trees are just like that in them. And it's going to take, it's going to take some time and effort and some real permitting to be able to pull all those trees out of that creek and clean them creeks out. Like you said, it's 40 or 50 years worth of logging and people cutting stuff, cutting timber and stuff all in the creek. I mean, I walked down two of them from one end to the other a period of time and, and they just, the time has really took a toll on them creeks. But like you say, it's not a canal, it's never been dug before, but it's going to have to be cleaned up. But you're saying there's a possibility we could clean it up?
I've seen projects come across the, the, the district's board table and we've approved projects just like that, yes.
Well, I will tell you, Jim, that back when Richard Sheffield was over at the County Road Department, we had a flooding situation. It wasn't a current like it is today, but back then it kind of blew us away because we didn't see it coming. Our backyard was, was totally flooded. I went and got Richard, Richard came around, we rode the truck, we spent all day riding. He came back a few days later and he said, I think we've got a situation. It was kind of like Richard said, there's accumulation, people building little dams and creek, some of the creeks going through town. They found a lot of shopping carts, just all debris and a lot of these little fingers that come out of the bay, as you mentioned, and they cleaned that up and man, it went away.
Well, I've seen people skiing right there by Old Doc's Market on Gerson Street when I was a teenager, so many people my age or older here that probably seen that too. Water has been a lot higher. I've seen it flowing across the river, the new hospitals out here on the highway, that deep across 19th. I've seen it flowing that deep across 98 down there at Palham Grove. So water, and when the, when the Swan River flowed over into the bay, there above Daytown, this whole county was flooded. And it, it, but it went down, you know? But what, what we run into, the permitting process is what we really going to need help from Swan River to help us work through a permitting process to, to get your stuff cleaned out. I mean, that's, that's what we really going to need.
You're looking at two guys that get those permits done right there.
Under the emergency order, what it allows is immediate action, the field authorization is what it's called, but permitting after the fact. And, and like Mr. Schwab mentioned, the Alligator Creek Cleanout is probably the best example where they identified trees that were damaged from a specific event. They identified areas, upland areas out of the wetlands to, to put the debris and we worked with Bradford County in that effort to clean out Alligator Creek. It looks amazing compared to what it looked like.
I've heard from Big County, all that cleaning out that really helped out a whole area. I mean, I've, I've heard that from several of the people down.
I never heard about this, the emergency order on this kind of stuff.
Mr. Cherokee, Warren Zwanka, I'm a geologist with Swan River Water Management District. So I'm also emergency coordinator at Swan River. We've been under emergency order ever since Idelly hit on August 28th. We've extended hours in conjunction with the governor's order. But what it allows is restoration to the, the conditions that existed prior to the event. And so that, that order isn't going away anytime soon. I, I know the governor's still, still renewing Nicole's order. So I'm sure Idelly will be around long enough to get the resources in, in place and the work to get, to get started. And so what we did, we had Bradford County on the Alligator Creek Cleanouts, we had done. We identified areas to distribute the debris because, you know, again, you're not trying to make the situation any worse in your school wetlands or whatnot, but identify what needs to be cleaned out. And they went in there and it was precision work, and that's what you need to get somebody like that.
Areas that we're having to literally navigate through, that you can't access right now because of this groundwater inundation. Does that order exist to be able to come back at a time when it is accessible? Or does it have to be during this winter?
No, the orders work quite no way. The permitting process is always there.
Right, so the reason I'm saying that is, I'm familiar with areas you can't get to with a machine practically, not without damaging or the threat of damage to other areas.
The Alligator Creek project wasn't done under emergency orders. That was a project that they permitted.
I understand, but we're dealing with this emergency right currently and with these conditions currently. So, I'm not against permitting the project, I'm certainly in for that. But I'd like to understand at the same time, you know, how we deal with some of these areas that we know right now, while there is a state of emergency such as Mr. Parkes talked about, that we can't get a machine to. Our folks can't, we can't access it at this point. There's too much water, the ground will hold you up, it's just too much risk. And then we come into the cost factor. And how does that impact our neighbors downstream if we do go to this place? So, those are just some of the questions.
Right, and that's why the order is specific to addressing returning systems to the way they were prior to the storm. I think Alligator Creek may have been, part of it was done under the Irma order because I know that the access was an issue. There's private ownership all the way down Alligator Creek, and under an emergency order, you can supersede that. The sheriff stepped in and said, we are accessing Alligator Creek. I know you own it, but we're clearing it. And so, the sheriff stepped in and made an order, I don't know how, I don't know all the legal aspects of it, but he allowed that access for that cleanout under the order.
Who'd that sheriff at that time?
I don't know, it was Sheriff Bradford County? Sir, sure, sir.
Was he the one who led the Swan River Management District one time? From Bradford County?
At one time, right out here on Twenty-seventh, there was another store there right by Cypress Pond. Gentlemen, I think they call it Cypress Flitberg. When I was a young man, I was standing there with daddy, I was just a young man. He was talking about him, fifty-two when the mill got going good, that Cypress Pond, Side Twenty-seven out there, went dry. And it net, he said he was raised up eating bass out of that, you know, before the fifties. He said it never helped water since then, long as that mill was running. I went by there today, it got watering. So, I mean, and he, you know, that groundwater comes out of that well, I had something to do with that Cypress Pond, you know? And he said it's been watering his whole life. So, that mill started up, got to go within the fifties, and that wound it up, you know?
Mr. Zwanka, so that emergency order that you made reference to, just to say a hypothetical, there's a tree laying down and a cabbage growing in the bottom of that ditch. You said restore it to pre-event levels. We can remove that tree, but we can't fool that cabbage.
I don't know if I followed the scenario, but the order has language in there that talks about that you can't do further dredging beyond what was in existence prior to the storm. I mean, it's specific to storm damage.
And we do vegetation removals without dredging?
If the damage was done by the storm, yeah. I mean, generally, a deeded drainage way is a lot easier to maintain, it's supposed to be maintained. And so, that's easier to permit than if you went into a river or a creek, a natural river or creek. The rules on what you can do in a natural river or creek are a little bit more stringent than you can imagine.
Sounds like what you're saying is that you could remove storm debris, but you couldn't do ditch cleaning?
If it's a deeded drainage way, you can maintain a deeded drainage way to the extent necessary to maintain that drainage.
Right now, the Penn Holloway, south of Townload Airport, it's full of trees just like that. I mean, it really is. And the water is standing right there above the Pocket Road, on the east side of Pocket Road. Water's all out in the hamper rights. When I come this way this afternoon, I live a little river bridge down there. It's still full of water. Used to, that river flowed pretty quick. It just is going now, it's, there's so much debris from a little golf course up to the, up to the mountain. It is having a hard time going now.
I think the concentration of the damage starts at the coast and comes in.
Yeah.
And I believe you can see those areas where the water is higher and held back. And that's why I had those kind of questions. These kind of areas at this point, I mean, I don't know how you can get a machine in there.
If you saw the before and after pictures of Alligator Creek's cleanout, I mean, they didn't need to dredge Alligator Creek. And the difference was amazing just doing the debris that had fallen.
Right. Yeah, we'd make a big difference right now in Penn Holloway. You know, it really would, there's a world trade in it. I mean, you couldn't count them off.
It would make a big difference.
Rocket Creek also.
And those trees were blown down by the storm. And he said we can take them out of there with, you know, with the permit. It'll just take a little while to get the process going.
It's a field authorization, we'd have to have environmental scientists look and plan staging areas and whatnot. But the company that did it, I mean, they weren't cheap, but they did really good work. So, we could send that information to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Did they recoup the expense through FEMA?
I don't know the answer to that. It was a lot of money, I don't know if that, it probably was some money.
I think the district paid for some of it too.
Have y'all identified all the areas of workflow restriction that she mentioned in her report?
In the creeks? No, that's not, that's not been done. Will that be done, will it be done? The flow charters in the creeks? That is probably part of the Army Corps.
Can you reset your question?
Well, we'll determine how much creeks it can slow down, like I'm here with this creek. Like in Washington, it fall very, very slowly over weeks and weeks and weeks, it used to go down very slowly. So, I know it's plugged up with storm debris. So, do you need a study? Or can you just see all a bunch of trees there and say, oh, these trees are holding it up?
So, this is my line of thinking is that I want to get my hands on that Alligator Creek permitting, since that's the success story. See just exactly what the context was. Is it vegetation removal? And then see if we could perhaps blanket that on our natural drainage paths, that being the four creeks that Commissioner Moody may mention too. At least as a starting point, knowing that those are the largest conveyors of water. And then we can branch off from those into individual areas. But I would be shocked if we would be able to access any of that until a much drier time.
If I could, I'll mention, it would be another example to go look and see what they did over at the wetlands. You know, if the plain creeks were over there, they'd have trees.
I was down in Pennsylvania, the ground road yesterday. Ground road's been on the water a couple of years.
That's off of Mixon?
On the lane?
Is it off of Mixon? It's like Ross and Gremlin or something?
Yeah.
But that one also heaters right down into a Cypress Pond, if I'm not mistaken.
Heated down into something, is that the end of the road?
Yes, sir. Part of what I know it is, if you go down there, there's a house there on the right, there's another house on the left, and there's a Cypress Pond between the road and the house, and the road just ends in a pond. If it's a place I know where you're talking about. I hadn't been there in a year and a half or better, but I remember it that way.
Well, we went there, and that's been demonstrated, that's a closed basin.
And that's what we see on a lot of these things, is the quad maps were put together back in the fifties. A lot of these areas that we have identified there, when you turn those on, you see that they are literally flat pond after flat pond after flat pond. Those have to fill and spill. There is no connection or drainage between those, except for, we see historical areas where you saw somebody did something to connect the dots and try to help train some of that.
We appreciate you doing your analysis. Looking at what our long-term effects are going to be and what solutions we come up with. And, you know, Mr. Dudley, yes, you will look for this.
I'll push them as hard as I can on the permitting.
After permitting, you know? And do what we can do with our waterways, get our waterways cleaned out.
And I will also remind the board that we entered a mission through the emergency management portal right after the storm, asking for assistance with this cleanout. I still have not received an answer about that. And I think Commissioner Newman was with me when we went to the Capitol and expressed our concern about this very topic. So, you know, I will pick that back up and see if I can get some action from any agency who will help us. I mean, we certainly have requested help, whether that be in the form of funding or, you know, someone to complete the separate for us. But it's not that we haven't asked for assistance with that. I just don't know where on the list it is.
Did Dixie County turn that water in on us?
No, you can blame that one on us. So, Mr. Cherokee, I will say we'll reach out also to see if we can help push something out along a little bit. And actually, if you identify some places, reach out to us, especially under the emergency order. We'll see what we can, you know, move it along and push through. And also, I want to thank Ms. Luana and Mr. Hank for spending about, what, three hours with us today, riding us around so we could actually see these areas. And it was interesting that the modeling that we had done kind of matched up some of the areas that you were concerned with.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We thank everyone for, you know, being here and all of you. What should we do to get some of this water out of here? So, thank you all. We'll move on to our next item. The clerk to present county clerk's report.
Not a lot of creeks will clean the debris up, you let us.
All right, so usually, usually every year, I kind of give you an update of what's going on. Most of the boat ramps citations is what I handle. But this year, I kind of expanded a little bit just so you got to have some information on kind of what we collect, any boat, any boat ramp for the five dollars. Those boat ramps plus the seventy-dollar citations for those people who don't pay the five dollars or have the twenty-dollar annual stickers. So, I'll just go, I know I cram a lot of information in this because I was trying to get it all on one piece of paper. So, I'll just go fill it for you, with you. But at the top, you can see we've got four different boat ramps that we maintain. And I did a two-year comparison, Twenty-two, that's fiscal year Twenty-two and fiscal year Twenty-three. And so, you can see the revenues there in the first part, so the five dollars, you can see what we collect. You can see it's pretty consistent from year to year offered. It's amazing how it's almost the same amount of money every year, but it's fairly consistent. The twenty-dollar annual fees, we don't, we don't, that's not associated with a boat ramp because, you know, people buy that, they can use it for any boat ramps. We've just always put it into the Keaton Beach, under the Keaton Beach area. But, and then you see the seventy-five dollars citations and the amount of money that's been collected for those boat ramps. And we do track those by what boat ramp locations were written at. So, you can see the, so you can see the total revenues there for each boat ramp. And then you see the expenses, so the expenses are the salary and benefits. So, that's, I think, most of the road department employees that they use to man the, at least, Keaton Beach and Steam Hatchie. The operating expenses and those things include like utilities, insurance, repairs and maintenance, and the cost of the hanger envelopes that we have to buy, people put the five dollars in and then hang the hanger on their window. And then you see the cost of the debt and all the debt are at Keaton Beach and Steam Hatchie during the peak times of the summer. And that's what we pay the sheriff, reimburse the sheriff for the cost of those. And then, and then so, since Steam Hatchie and Dark Island usually don't collect enough money to pay for, don't collect enough revenue to pay for their expenses, then we usually do a transfer from the decaf money to just, just to show it as a wash. So, you can see there, the net for Keaton Beach is thirty thousand a year. And then the net for Off-Cell is usually about fifteen hundred to two thousand. And then, of course, Steam Hatchie, Dark Island, and Zero. And then you can see, I put reserves there, so this was reserves at the end of September the thirtieth. So, in the Keaton Beach one, we had three hundred and forty-seven thousand, and in the Off-Cell one, we had twenty thousand. That was at the end of September, September thirtieth. So, the line below that in red is the citations that were filed or given this year, or in Twenty-two and Twenty-three. And that's by, you see it there by each boat ramp. And I know that, I know me and Mark Wiggins was down in that area one day and stopped by. There were some people there begging us for some change so they could pay their file or if they didn't have change for it. But out of the Keaton Beach, but usually, you can see that the biggest violator is in Steam Hatchie. So, one of the things that I started doing this year, in the bottom right, we started in August, we started putting this language on our citations. And we provided a QR code for people to be able to pay their citations by QR code. So, basically, what they do is, if they get a citation, they can scan this QR code with their phone. It goes directly to my website, and they can pay the seventy-five dollars right there. And that, I found out, I did do some research today, and since we implemented that in August, which was really kind of at the end of the summer, so it was kind of starting to pay for the fall off, but we've still had twenty-four people utilize that QR code to pay their seventy-five dollar fines. I thought it was a pretty good number for seeing that it's kind of at the end of the, end of the summer when we implemented that. So, we expect to see an uptick in that. And we did that too. You can see we put on there too, a little statement there at the bottom, you know, to talk to the, you know, contact the tax clerk's office if they want to buy a twenty-dollar, just to inform people that it's out there. And, you know, you can, that's a lot to you in a family of five-dollar citations. So, we tried to, tried to educate people there and let them know that that is available for them if they want, if they want to go that route instead of having to pay the five dollars every time.
The number that you quoted is only those that use QR code. That doesn't speak of the success rate of recouping these infraction costs.
So, the infractions, I did want to talk to you a little bit about that. Right now, we actually have a pretty good rate of people paying. Most people do pay. Right now, we have fifteen that are six months or older that haven't been paid. So, and we, and we're in the process right now of sending them additional letters saying, hey, it's been a while. You know, you need to do that. But, you know, we may want to talk about what to do with those. We do need to talk about those citations and what to do with those particular ones that don't pay. And so, I don't know, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Bishop about it or Luana about it. You know, I don't know what kind of enforcement we have there, but.
It won't. I know that the judge won't hear it, so, I mean, you know, I don't know if the code.
Code enforcement?
With the code enforcement, could hear it. One of the things that sometimes that work on that would be certified letter from the county attorney.
Yeah. And we've just started sending those kind of letters out from the clerk and saying, maybe this is kind of your last letter. So, maybe, maybe one from the.
You only have sixteen out of a hundred and sixty plus.
Mm-hmm.
That's not bad.
Yeah, I mean, it's not bad. And that's, that seems to be consistent with what I remember from last year. It's not, it's not a high number of people, people usually do pay, but, you know.
But also, if you have a letter too, just like you did here, Gary, in the letter, what I used to call collection letters, you know, in bold font, say, we can avoid this, you know, by buying the sticker for twenty dollars.
Yeah.
You know? And that would get somebody's attention. Certainly like to know of those ones that are like that, how many of them are from our family?
Yeah, it's probably not very many.
Not very many, I'll bet.
Not very many from in the county. Most people in the county owe about the twenty dollars and. Most people in the county know about the twenty dollars and permit, and they're going to get it. And I don't know, I know that the tax clerk has a way for them to, they can, they can order the twenty-dollar permit online from his website, but then he has to mail it to them, so there's a, there's a delay there because they have to buy it, and then he has to mail it to them before they can put it on their, on their vehicle. Um, but yeah, I know that it's like Seahag and Steen Hachy sells them, and there may be some other places. And I know Littlest and Bigback sells them, so, I mean, there's, I just don't know, you know, um, if people know about that or not. So, I don't know, maybe we could, you know, maybe, maybe some signage or something to try to, try to better promote that, too, so...
I've seen people online with their phone, buying them at the boat ramp on Offsell River. They're buying the twenty-dollar thing. And then they can show their phone, where they show, if a gang were to stop them or check them, they can show it to them where they have bought it.
Yeah, but I, but it's, but it's the county and code enforcement is writing the tickets, so, right, they're not there, so... I mean, but we, we do dismiss them sometimes if something like happens, if they say, "Oh, I bought one, and I haven't got it yet," and they got a ticket, and we can, we can go back to the tax clerk's records and show that they bought it. And we're, and I'll dismiss one of those tickets, so we, we've proven that they, you know, they did that. So, we do whatever we can on that, if something like happens. So, we, we do our best to help in those situations, so...
Gary, I heard you mention you said there was three hundred thousand in reserves at the Keaton Beach. And there was thirty thousand or so?
Twenty also.
Twenty thousand also, but you collect thirty thousand through the proceeds of, um, launch fees that goes into that reserve every year? That reserve is, that thirty thousand, is that associated only with Keaton Beach? Or is that the boat ramps as a whole?
So, we, we put it all in Keaton Beach. So, the way it works is that if it's a five-dollar fee or a citation fee, it's by boat ramp. But because of the twenty dollars, we cannot identify which thing it is. We've put all the revenue from the twenty-dollar decal into Keaton Beach.
So this is where I'm going. So if I were to call Danielle and say, "How much of that three hundred thousand are we legally allowed to use at, to make improvements or maintenance issues at Keaton Beach?" Can she tell me a number? Can she say you can have a hundred and fifty grams of this or ten dollars of it?
I would, I mean, the way I look at it is, is I think that money's available for all boat ramps.
I just knew that part of the original FWC stuff said that revenues collected at Keaton Beach had to only be expended at Keaton Beach. That's why I was asking that specific, because there are seawall down there that we need to repair now.
Yeah. That's not always collected at Keaton Beach. The twenty-dollar decals is just...
That was the reason I was asking.
We just don't have no way to separate that out, so it's always been put in Keaton Beach. So I would say that that's all available for Keaton Beach.
So we could look at that reserve for maintenance issues at any of the boat ramp facilities?
Yes, because what we normally do is, like, if Steen Hachy, Steen Hachy's going to be short, because those expenses are usually more than the five dollars that's collected. And so we, we move money from that decal money that's in Keaton Beach to...
You said you made that hole every year?
Yeah, we just zero it out, just to make it whole.
And that three hundred presumably has been growing some?
About thirty thousand a year.
Okay.
Because it's restricted, and we, there's only so much we can expend it on.
Wait, there's repairs that are in need definitely around that.
Bishop puts his, fill a stamp on these letters, they'll get paid. All right, we're going on with two out of five. We're going to discuss the Michael project, yes?
Uh, so you all have the list, you can see it's been growing. We have a lot of projects going on right now. And our goal is to always, um, try to identify which project the funding may come to an end and get those finished as quickly as possible. We try to prioritize the projects that have, you know, a definite deadline. So, obviously, there are some projects that we put on the back burner so we can ensure that the projects that have a finite shelf life get done quickly. Um, that being said, the one project I would like to discuss with the board is the Forest Captain Hall Arena, um, the Horsemen's Arena. Um, as you know, we submitted a grant application for funding and also requested a legislative appropriation for improvements to that arena. Now, in the meantime, the Taylor County Horsemen's Association has lost their lease on their arena. So they have approached staff and asked, if they, and some commissioners, and asked if they could use the arena area. We met with them on site Monday, myself and some, and some of our staff. And we feel like we can have the area cleaned up, mowed, we needed bathrooms cleaned, and the arena dragged by their next show, which is March sixteenth. We have sent, since the arena has not been used in so long, some of our agreements are outdated or we're concerned that they may be outdated. So all of the indemnity agreements, I sent to Mr. Bishop.
You sent to me yesterday, uh, I read it this, um, this afternoon, and I've got to look up the update on the statute with regard to the helmets for children.
Yes.
And, um, and I will, like I said, I asked my secretary to pull this, that new statute or any amendments, so I can redo that, um, a whole harmless indemnity agreement.
I believe that's Nicole's law.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's one, it's, um, six seventy-three? Whatever it was, I looked, you know, like I said, I, I read it, but I want to make sure that the statute that I read hasn't been amended, you know, like in twenty twenty-three. I had that happen to me, um, last week, and it was, I didn't know about the amendment, so... But I found out about it, another lawyer told me, ha, ha. So, um, so, like I said, I will, I will redo that for you. Okay.
Um, we will be roping off, uh, the bleacher areas.
Roping off, get that roped off?
This is the Forest Captain Hall.
Yes. Um, to identify that we don't want any traffic in some of those areas because they, you know, they, they fall into disrepair, that nobody's used the arena in so many years. So we will identify those areas where there should be no traffic. Um, they have agreed to bring their own seating, um, so I don't, I don't see any issue right now. They are checking into the, um, certificate of insurance, which is required for use at county facilities. Um, and they have also asked for a fee waiver as a nonprofit entity. We do have the ability to waive fees, um, at, at my level for nonprofits, which I don't, I don't really have a problem with doing that, um, for this group unless something comes up or something's brought to my attention. So I did want to update the board on that. Um, they will be getting back to me about their certificate of insurance, and we'll get the, the forms, and then we should be, we should be ready to move forward. So I'm excited about potential use of the arena, definitely. I just want to make sure that, you know, we can keep up with maintenance, um, which, you know, can always be a challenge when we've got so many other things going on. But that is, that is our goal. Do you have any questions about any other projects or any other items on the list?
I'm just, uh, that, that fixing and the, and the conflicts, I know that's been a while for...
It has. So actually, um, we, we went through the quotation price, and, and that was just held up because that was damaged during the storm. So we had to go through the process of getting, you know, submitting claims to our insurance company and either getting denials or payment for that, and then make sure that it's on our inventory lists for FEMA reimbursement. We actually did approve a purchase order today so we can move forward. They, we had, um, one contractor who was a lower quote, but then there was an issue with getting the supplies. So we finally wrapped all that up, we issued a purchase order, and we were trying to move forward with that as quickly as possible. I know it's, our hope was to start, you know, right after the start of the fiscal year, but just all of the, um, red tape that we go through when FEMA's involved can really slow things down.
Yeah, let's see any questions on any of the projects? All right. I'm sorry, very much. So, please, that will continue our workshop of, uh, meeting the jury.
I muted.